Okay, welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order, April 18th, 2016. On, please, call roll.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Marmee. Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Riletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
And Mr. Cos.
Here.
We have nine here this evening. Next on the agenda is the invocation by Mrs. Floyd, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand?
Would you bow your heads, please? Almighty God, we thank you for this beautiful spring weather, and we ask that you be with those people in our community as they're out and about in the good weather and help people pay attention to others so we don't have accidents that oftentimes occur when there's good weather. We ask that you be with the families of Will Smith and Officer Steve Smith from Columbus, and please protect our safety forces, both police and fire. There have been so many incidents throughout the country, things that have happened to them, and we just ask you that they be protected. We ask that you be with those in our community who don't have very much, or whom homelessness or drug addiction is a major issue. We ask that you be with these people and help them. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make the decisions for this city of Newark. We ask this in your name. Amen.
William, you want to start it for me?
Sure would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, William. Thanks, Mrs. Floyd. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's upon council, discuss anything. Change due to the agenda tonight? Do we have anything? Mrs. Floyd.
I'd like to excuse Mr. Marmee, as he has a baseball game tonight.
Second.
And, do we need to vote on that?
Well, we'll do it first. We'll do it first, Mr. Bub second. All those in favor, see if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
And I just want to mention that Mr. Marmee and I have agreed to use Rule 11 for 16-14 because there have been some changes in the language. Doesn't affect the legislation at all, but the title of the project has changed and something in the date has changed, so...
What we use now for 16-41.
16-41, yeah.
Anything else for caucus?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
Need to announce, I need to abstain from 1630. A member of the Board of Directors for Behavioral Healthcare Partners, so I'm going to abstain from that.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Anything else? Next on the agenda, we have the minutes of our April 4th, 2016 meeting. You've all got a copy of those, or a motion to approve those?
Some more motion.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Raff. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. If that passes, thank you. Next on our appointments, we have an appointment by Mayor Hall. Mayor Hall's appointing Kim Luss to the Norah Keith Lincoln County Board Authority Board of Directors. The four-year term begins June 1st, 2016, and will expire May 31st, 2020. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd just make a couple comments. Again, this is a reappointment. Kim sits on the board and is welcome. I think a lot of people in this community probably knows the family pretty well, her husband Randy. She graduated from Lakewood and then went to Otterbine College and graduated. She was a mortgage loan officer for Park National Bank for 15 years, and she sits in her current position with State Farm as their public affairs specialist, and has been there for 20 years. So I would ask that everyone please reappoint her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All in favor, see if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. If that passes, thank you. We have three reports of standing committees tonight, one from finance, one from service, and one from capital improvements. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We also have two reports from city officials this evening, one from Stephen Johnson, our auditor, operating report for the period ending March 31st, 2016, and Barb Jobe, city tax administrator, income tax reports for the period ending March 31st, 2016. Again, without objection, those will be received and filed. We have five communications this evening regarding the BSL, some for, some against. Without objection, those will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have one of our two sections for comments from citizens. Basically, this is not a debate with council, this is just an opportunity for you to be heard. Would anyone like to speak during this first section of citizens' comments? I'd just like to ask you if you'll give your name and address for the record. We appreciate it.
This is William Butcher, 263 Union Street. I'd like to know when my Union Street is going to get paved, and my area comment is some of these potholes around the city. We've been hitting them here quite a bit, going to work, come home from work, and I'd like to know when that brand new travel road is going to get done. I know when that old travel road is going to get, those potholes fixed, because we've been hitting them really hard, and I'm afraid somebody or someone just might bust the ax on our vehicles. If that passes.
Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to resolutions on the second reading, 16-29.
Resolution 16-29 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into an amended agreement with the Norfolk Development Partners as its agency and instrumentality for commercial development in the city of Norfolk.
It's for you to say. For the second reading of 16-29, what did you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 16-29.
Motion by Mr. Raff?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion on 16-29?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
I want to move to make an amendment to this resolution.
Yes, Mr. Blake, go ahead.
Send that to audit for written copy. The amendment will be, at least one member of the Board of Directors appointed by the city of Norfolk shall be either the president of Norfolk City Council or a member of City Council designated by the council president, and at least one member of the Board of Directors appointed by the city of Norfolk shall be a member of the Downtown Norfolk Association. That's the motion.
Motion by Mr. Blake to amend, is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who with? Second by Mr. Riletta. We have any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
I think that there's, we've had, at least I've had some discussions with administrators and other members of council, and the intent is to have, currently, there's 10 members for the Norfolk Development Partners Board. Six of those members are members of the Chamber of Business Community, and then four of the members are appointed by the city of Norfolk, which we all vote on. Right now, the current four members, of which we have, are the Director of Service, Director of Development, the City Engineer, and then a member from the Downtown Norfolk Association. I feel as though we, as a legislative body, should have some type of representation on that board, and so that's the purpose or the intent of the amendment. And then the second part, dealing with the DNA Downtown Norfolk Association, is just to get into writing what they already do in practice. And so that's, that would be the pure, simple amendment that I'm offering.
Okay. Mr. Blake, any other discussion on the amendment? Mrs. Floyd?
I just want people to be aware, because, you know, I've discussed, I've debated this all day long with myself, because I remember when this board was first formed, and when we first, the CIC was first set up, and our Development Partners was first set up, and Mark Guthrie pushing to have a member of the DNA involved. I go to almost all the DNA meetings, and it represents, you know, a lot of the downtown community, a lot of small businesses that are down there. But I do think one of the things we need to be aware of is that if it's a member of council who is there talking to the mayor and to Mr. Rhodes, one of the things that we need to be aware of is that this board members are expected to work pretty hard, as I understand, and there can be some financial obligations. So I just think we, as members of council, need to be aware of that.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Raff?
I would encourage and be all for a member of the Downtown Norfolk Association being a member of this board. I think that's an excellent suggestion. And this is the first I've heard of it, so I'm a little cautious and skeptical and hesitant about a member of the council being a member of the board. It is a commitment, and it is an obligation, and this is a, for lack of sounding bad, this is a part-time position for us, not a career position, us being members of council, many of, most of which have daytime obligations, being jobs and careers. It's going to be very limited as to who could actually be eligible to even be on this board and be able to serve. I know the meetings are always open. I, for one, have attended many of the meetings myself as a council member. Obviously, I don't have a voting position on it, but I've always been welcomed with open arms and been able to attend when I've been permitted to attend and encouraged to attend, and I've been able to, to be able to actually fulfill a commitment as a board member. I don't know, I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks, but I'm very hesitant on that.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Anyone else? Mr. Ruff?
Can you read the amendment again, please?
Sure. Jeremy, would you read that again, so we have a...
At least, I can even provide Mr. Bub with a corrected copy, too. At least one member of the Board of Directors appointed by the city of Norfolk shall be either the president of Norfolk City Council or a member of City Council designated by the council president, and at least one member of the Board of Directors appointed by the city of Norfolk shall be a member of the Downtown Norfolk Association.
If I can ask a follow-up, Mr. President, this is the first I was made aware of this. Could we get some input from the, at least a member of the administration, or at least ask if someone has input on this?
Anyone from the administration? Mayor, do you have input for this, or?
I...
Mr. Rhodes?
We both, Dave and I, we both make the same comments.
Yep. What was that?
Could say some comments. I'll let Dave first.
Mr. Rhodes?
Thursday morning at 8:00, Chamber of Commerce is the meeting. It's an open meeting, you have an opportunity to speak, just as you do at a council meeting. So, it is open. There's 10 members on the board, the administration only gets four picks out of the 10. Carol's right, when this first came about, the DNA really wanted to have a member. So, the mayor gave up one of his picks for a DNA member. The DNA member that's appointed to the board currently is Andrew Morrison. On the board, in addition to that, the representing administration is myself, I serve as treasurer. Mark Motter serves as the marketing and economic development, and then Brian Moorhead serves as, you know, the city engineer, and very intimately involved with the projects. This is a working board. This is a board that has, wears many different hats, and we work very hard to get things done. So if a member of council was added, was added, it would take either myself, Mr. Motter, or Mr. Moorhead out. You could not affect the chamber's six choices. I mean, you could reach out to the chamber and ask them to appoint a council member with one of their six choices, but, and I'd have to defer to law director, I don't think they're obligated to do that. So, if you vote for that, what will happen is myself, Mr. Motter, or Mr. Moorhead, one of us, when the terms are up, won't be reappointed.
That's all, Mr. Rhodes. Can I ask a clarification, Mr. Sassen? So, right now, these four folks are on the board, so this would not take effect until one of their terms were up.
Correct.
Thank you. Mayor, do you have something?
Yeah, I would just, and, I mean, to be honest, Jeremy, I briefly talked about it, I didn't understand the guarantee of the DNA also. I was open, I guess, to a council member that would have been in place of a DNA member, so we looked at it a little bit. Each of the people that serve on that board, surely from this administration, are very instrumental. If you people know, everybody knows how much private dollars have come in through our CIC. It's about as effective as CIC in the state as there is, and I get a little bit hesitant to disturb that too much. I guess I'll be honest and blunt to it, as I generally am, I'd like to know how many have gone to those meetings regularly on this body, because they are open. So, you know, it is a working committee, there's a lot of commitment, there's a commitment to go out and ask people for dollars, that's how this thing works. Dave sits on there on the executive board, and is pretty instrumental, is our service director that signs contracts. Brian is, took over for Stuart Moynihan that was on that board, Stuart had resigned from the city course, and Brian has been very good, because I sometimes think he was kind of our planner, excuse me, prior, having planner, because everything includes roads and streets. But I know what we're doing now, and every one of those meetings, usually Brian's involved or Roger's involved, because of all that going on, and certainly Mark, economic development, he's represented from his department that way. So, of those four, there'd be a dent there somewhere. Council, I understand it, but I thought it was something maybe to replace potentially the DNA piece, so, and that'd be, whether it'd be more dialogue, that the chamber would appoint somebody from DNA going up, but that, we haven't gone down that road yet. So, it's not just a, it's a working board, I'll just be a fact, the hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been raised to make what's happening, going on, is amazing right now, so I just wouldn't want to disturb it too much, so...
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bub?
Yeah, I think, that being said, I'm not, you know, Jeremy, I'm not totally against this concept or idea, but I don't think I'm going to support it right at this time. I'd like to have a little more research, and again, you know, we do appropriate funds for this, you know, CIC, and again, we're been, we would be voting on stuff we're approving, I don't know, it's just, I'd like to do a little more research before I would vote in favor of this, with all due respect.
Ms. Hall?
I just have a question about if, I mean, Mr. Raff is correct, we're all pretty busy. If there are four seats available, and one would be for council, and then an extra would be DNA, is that correct?
I don't believe that's an extra, that's one of the four.
That's one of the four. Well, what would happen if none of, none of the council people would be able to do that? It sounds like there's a great deal of work, and, you know, some financial responsibilities with that. Then where does that, where would that seat be left, as to be appointed by?
I'm not sure I have an answer. Mr. Blake, you want to answer, or you want me to ask the law director what happens?
Well, the way it's worded, it would fall into your lap, Mr. President, but I think that out of the 11 of us, it would, he, no, I've emailed Dawn about that, so, but the way it's worded, it would fall into the lap of the council president, so...
Thank you.
Mrs. Floyd?
Can I ask Jeremy to explain, as he explained to several of us, why he thinks a member of council should be on there? I mean, I think we need to hear that.
Sure.
If he'd like to... Yeah, Mr. President, I, I guess I would, and the mayor's correct, I, we've had a conversation at Ben Franklin School, when we were doing the United Way Walk with Deb Vingus, and the addition of the DNA language came this afternoon in conversations with the minority leaders, so that's where that language came from in the last minute, sometimes making legislations like sausage, as we all know, so that's where that came from. But my intent, or my hope, is that, you know, there's great value in this board, I think we all recognize that. We recognize the good deeds that are happening downtown, we recognize the good things that are happening at White's Field, there's discussions that are going to be occurring about development throughout our community, either be the Longer Burger Basket, or other parts of our 21st Street, wherever else. And this whole, this board actually covers the whole city, not just downtown Norfolk. And so, as a part of those discussions, I just felt as the legislative body should have a representative there, a liaison onto that board, and, you know, one of the 11 of us should serve on there, just to be able to be in communications on a monthly basis about all the important work that's going on, and that's, that's the intent. Now, the engineers' office reports to the service director, and so I can see that position being represented fully by the service director. And so if we're talking about, or concerned about people being bumped, then the service department isn't represented by the director there on that board versus the city engineer. And so that's, that's very simply why I want, I mean, I think that there should be some type of liaison, some type of member of the legislative body on that board, so that we can be involved intimately with all the good works that they do.
Mrs. Floyd?
I know this is my third time.
I know.
Okay. I just needed a, is it, does this piece of legislation need to be passed tonight? Is there a deadline on this? Can I ask Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Rhodes?
Okay.
Carol, there's not a deadline on this particular piece of legislation, although it is a piece of legislation that, when we began to talk about the amendment to the agreement with the CIC and Newark City Council and the city, this is something that we had to propose to the CIC. Really, what we're trying to do is get property that the city owns over to the CIC so they can put it back into development, and then at that point, the city gets paid for that property. I'll give you an example, on the corner of Dio Drive and Mount Vernon Road, there was a small triangle piece there, and the city paid almost $6,000, give or take a few dollars to have that done, and we got $3,800 for it. We've got many small pieces of property that are costing us tax dollars, because if a property doesn't have a city use, we cannot get an exemption. And what we're trying to do is get those properties that don't have cities' use back, back to somebody who'll pay taxes on them and back in service.
Hang on, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Cos?
I have one of those famous kind of, two-part kind of questions. The money that we put into the CIC, which I believe is $60,000.
Right.
My understanding is that is to pay the director of the...
That goes into, that goes into a pot, that's correct, and it goes into the total budget, and I think the budget this year, and I'm going to be wrong here, somewhere around $130,000. But that, the director's not nearly that. But we pay for some things, and we, we do some inspections, and we get some advice when we get ready to participate into a decision.
But those city funds can't be used for a project?
They're, if you're asking, are they being used for a project? I gave you an example, White's Field.
Excuse me, Jim?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Because they're Community Development Block Grant Dollars bill, they have to go into what's called a matrix code, and every year we have to set that up. Ultimately, the matrix code items, or activities, as they're called, have to go into a pre-planning process. I guess to summarize, we have to do environmentals, for example, for all the dollars that we use Community Development Block Grant for. The category of wages and salaries fits very, very well for using the Community Development Block Grant Dollars, as opposed to dispersing it through all the different activities that the CIC may get involved with. That would become very complex, it'd become very cumbersome, and so we had a staff meeting actually up in our department, and it decided that this is really the best fit and the best use of these CDBG dollars is to keep them specifically for wages. And that's why, so we don't, they don't go toward projects primarily just for that reason.
Good morning. Mr. Raff?
Obviously, this amendment has raised a lot of questions, and I, for one, we've discussed the resolution in committee and had a debate in committee, and it sounds like this resolution needs to be discussed through committee. My own personal opinion, we have a CIC that we've put in place that's been functioning, that is working incredibly well in bringing public and private entities together and accomplishing a great deal throughout the entire city that we would not have been able to accomplish otherwise. In my opinion, this amendment takes a member of a legislative body and puts, and inputs that member into an administrative role, and I don't think that's the role of a council member. So, I'm not going to support the amendment. I would be in favor of bringing that amendment back to the service committee in a form of its own legislation, but not money up this particular piece of legislation, and, and let's get this through so that we're actually going back to accomplishing all that we've already accomplished through this phenomenal organization.
Do we have any other discussion on this amendment, Mr. Sassen?
I'd just like to clarify the answer that was given to Ms. Hall's question with regard to what if no one on council was ready, willing, or able to serve. I don't think it's terribly accurate to say that that would then fall to the responsibility of the president. If the president at any particular time was also not ready, willing, and able to serve, that seat would sit vacant, so there is the, there's no way that you can legislate that that seat shall be filled if there's no one on council ready, willing, and able to serve that seat. It could theoretically at that point sit vacant.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Mr. Cos?
When is anyone's term up? I have absolutely no idea on that.
Anyone else?
Is it something that's got to be done this minute?
No. I think it's another year and a half.
Yeah. No, a lot of us were just reappointed, so now, to answer your question, no, it's not something that needs to be done immediately, it can go back to committee. We can get you the staggered terms when terms are up, that's, that's not a problem. But there is an appointment imminent, there's no new appointment. The last appointment was Brian Moorhead, and that's a couple-year term.
Ms. Hall?
Yeah, I was going to ask about the terms as well, because is it two-year or four-year for each person? There could be an overlap, and we may not have a council person on there anyway, I mean...
Is it a two- or four-year term? Three-year?
Is it different?
Three-year.
So, but it's staggered, different people, a different... Thank you.
Mr. Raff?
I guess the last, final point I want to make is, is the fact that this is, and these meetings are open, and as somebody who has attended a fair number of these meetings, they are very welcoming of any council member, and encouraging of any council member who would like to attend these meetings. So if somebody wants to attend them on a regular basis, if you are ready, willing, and able to do so, you can, you are more than welcome to do so, and anything that they do, any monies that they spend that comes from the number, comes from the city, you're going to have an opportunity to vote on in this board as well.
Thank you, Mr. Raff.
So, go ahead.
Are you, you done?
Yeah.
Let's go call your...
The meetings are the third Thursday of the month, is that correct?
At 8:00 AM.
And they are at...
Chamber of Commerce.
Down below.
I'm the first to say, I've never been to one. I don't know if anybody else, other than Mr. Raff, has ever been to one. I have not.
Anyone else?
Mr. Frasier, I forgot you were here. Since, since it's my birthday, I figured I'd throw my hat to the ring. So, one of, the main issue that I have is, is kind of tying the hands of the mayor on this. I think that he should be free to appoint the people that are best suited for the position, and it's not the legislative position to determine in such a finite way who must be on the Newark Board of CIC. I believe that there's a distinct separation of powers that need to exist, and I believe that this legislation should oversee that, and so that's why I will not support it.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
If you're over 30, you can speak. How old are you?
28.
Oh, darn.
Mr. President, just a final comment.
I just want to say that I have no, a lot of respect for what this board's done. I hope everyone, especially conversations I've had with members of administration, members of council, realize that. I think this board is one of significance just because of the influence that they'll have on the future of our community, and so that's why I just believe that a seat at the table should be given to a member of council. Just as a reminder to members of council, these are City of Norfolk appointments, so council votes on these, so it's not just an administrative appointment, so that's just a reminder to council members. And then there's, you know, I don't know that you would support it, but I just understand the comments that were made in the other way, so...
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Are we all, are we ready to vote? Mrs. Floyd for the fourth time.
I know, sorry. I don't usually do this, but...
I know, that's why I let you go.
I think maybe we need to think about this a little bit more, but I do think, I think there's a real advantage to having a DNA member. As I, you know, the appointment was made before because it was recommended, and it's not in legislation. The DNA has become a very effective organization downtown, has become much, I've been a member for a number of years, and I've seen it grow and grow and grow, and the number of people who come continues to expand, and the Final Fridays are now sponsored by Park National Bank and LMH, and so, you know, it's gotten more and more powerful, and I think at some point, maybe we need to have that in writing as an, as a possible appointment, so it's not just, you know, the mayor's cabinet, for instance, it would be the members of the, of the CIC. But I do, you know, anyhow, that's, I think maybe this is something we need to think about a little bit more, but, okay. I'm done.
Mr. Cos?
I don't know if this is my third or fourth time, but I, I'm of the opinion that we need to table this. I think there is some more discussion that needs to be had. I think this should go back to committee.
You're making a motion to table the whole 16-29, Mr. Cos?
I don't, can we...
I don't think we can just table the amendment, I think we should...
We can't just table the amendment. We have to table the entire thing, and not make a motion to table the entire thing.
You can do a de facto tabling, if you will, but the way to do that would be to, you would have to piece, pass the initial piece of legislation by defeating the amendment, passing the piece of legislation. You could then go back to council with a new piece of legislation which enacts what Mr. Blake is trying to do.
Okay.
I mean, de facto tabling, but not actually a motion to table.
Right.
I got you, okay.
Yeah.
Mrs. Floyd.
I guess, I guess that's what I would like to see us do.
I would like to see this go to committee for more discussion, because I do think the discussion we've had tonight shows that we need a little more discussion. I think some people, you know, totally made up their minds, and I understand, but I also think maybe we need a little more discussion, so.
Well, we have an amendment on 16-29 on the floor in a second, so we can vote on the amendment.
We have a second.
Alan, we're left with it.
Yeah, we have a second, just to relax. So, we can vote on the amendment. If that passes or doesn't pass, then we can move on 16-29, and then we can do something in committee if you like. Mike Ritts, did I say it? Close. Thank you. Anything else on the amendment? Are we ready to vote?
Mr. President, if I can make one comment.
Go ahead. Ms. Hall.
I just have one last question. I didn't understand, and I know there's, we're going to talk about this more, but it seems like what you're saying is council would vote on a council member to be part of this?
Either that or council president would appoint them. Which one was that, Jeremy?
The council president.
I would make an appointment, and then council would vote on it.
Correct.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
So, I would pick my body, and then all council would have to, six of council would have to think that's okay.
It's not what it says.
No.
But it's a City of Newark appointment. City Newark appointments are voted on by council.
It's stated otherwise in the legislation.
We'll get that worked out, Ms. Hall, if that goes that way.
He's a...
Mayor Hall.
I'd just say, I think the amendment, to me, doesn't have to exactly do with the legislation at school, but apples and oranges. I would just ask that this body, that we thoroughly discussed this legislation, pass it. We're happy to talk about the amendment piece and bring it to committee, as we talked about a little bit, and look at those terms and talk about all the parts. I'm happy to do that, and we can talk about that as another thing. I just would hate to hold up this legislation for something that has to do about appointments, I guess, unless someone thinks the two are tied.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's vote on the 16-29 amendment. Honorable, please call the rule. You're voting on the amendment, as always, takes six minutes to pass.
Mrs. Floyd, no. Mr. Frazier?
No.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Marmy?
Mr. Raff?
No.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
No.
Mr. Cost?
No.
So, the amendment does not pass, so now we're down to 16-29, not amended. Is there any discussion on 16-29 the way it is? So, you know, Honorable, please call the rule, vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Cost?
Yes.
16-29 passes nine zero. Did that correctly, right? Correct. Next, we have on the second reading, 16-30.
Resolution 16-30 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Newark to enter into a community development block grant-funded sub-receipient agreement with the here-and-after-named organizations to carry out activities included within Newark's fiscal year 2016 Community Development Block Grant One-Year Action Plan.
You heard the reading of 16-30, the second reading. What does your wish? Mrs. Floyd.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-30.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 16-30?
It's something we do every year. We have a number of community agencies involved in this that need that money, so.
Anyone else? Again, Mr. Blake, abstaining from this one. Honorable, please call the rule.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Cost?
Yes.
I do. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Blake?
Abstaining. 16-30 passes. Next, we have 16-31.
Resolution 16-31 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to apply for financial support from the State of Ohio 2016 Nature Works Grant.
You heard the second reading of 16-31. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Floyd.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-31.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Cost. Any discussion on 16-31? See none? Honorable, please call the rule, vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Cost?
Yes.
16-31 passes nine zero. Next, we've got a resolutions on the first reading, 16-32.
Resolution 16-32 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
16-32...
Mr. President, make a motion to waive the two-day.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Bub. Mrs. Floyd.
There are some payouts involved in this, and we need to expedite that.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Honorable, please call the rule, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mrs. Floyd?
Make a motion to adopt 16-32.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Bub. Any discussion on 16-32? See none? Honorable, please call the rule, vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mrs. Floyd?
Make a motion to adopt 16-32.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Bub. Any discussion on 16-32? See none? Honorable, please call the rule, vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Cost?
Yes.
16-32 passes nine zero. Next, on the first reading, we have 16-33.
Resolution 16-33 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
16-33 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 16-34.
Resolution 16-34 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
16-34 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 16-36.
Resolution 16-36 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to apply for funding from the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance under the Bulletproof Best Partnership Grant Program.
16-36 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 16-37.
Resolution 16-37 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation in carrying out the LIC North Safe Routes to School Project and declaring an emergency.
16-37 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt 16-37.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 16-37?
Mr. President? We have an adversity clause on this due to O dot timelines.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Anything else? See none? Honorable, please call the rule, vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Cost?
Yes.
16-37 passes nine zero. Next, we have 16-41. That's a piece of legislation that Mrs. Floyd was talking about in caucus. I do have Mr. Marmy's okay in text. Anyone who'd like to see it, I can patch in my thumb. Honorable, please read 16-41.
Resolution 14, or, sorry, 16-41 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit an application to the Ohio Development Services Agency for a Community Housing Impact and Preservation Grant Award for program year 2016.
This did not go to committees who are using Rule 11, where the minority and majority leader agreed to bring this up to council. Basically, this is a piece of legislation that we passed in February for a grant that there was either the grant name was wrong, where there was just one, there was a typographical problem, or just they changed the name of the grant. So, we have to redo the whole, redo the legislation is why we're doing this, basically. Is there any discussion on 16-41? Honorable, I ought to have a motion.
Make a wave of the two-day reading.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to waive the two-day reading.
Motion to waive the two-day re-ruel by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Bub. Mrs. Floyd?
No, there's a, yeah, there's a timeline on this that we have to, I think, by the end of this month, so.
Thank you.
Mrs. Floyd?
Please call the rule, waive the two-day re-ruel.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yeah.
Two-day re-ruel is waived. Mrs. Floyd?
Make a motion to adopt 16-41.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Cost. Any discussion?
This is a grant that we get that we, our community, certainly can use, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Anyone else? Honorable, please call the rule, vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
And Mr. Cost?
Yes. 16-41 passes, and that concludes our legislation tonight. Thank you for bearing with me in this seat. Okay, next, our second section of comments from citizens. Do we have anyone?
I'm William Butcher, 263 Union Street. I was, I was used to be in the People's First, the People's First Council. Now, I'm still looking for a second club or some I could join. I'd like to know if North State Council could point me the direction I could go, join a, actually, club or some, but I pass.
Thank you, William. Anyone else for comments from citizens? Okay.